Mr. Hilsinger.
Here.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Mr. Taylor. Mr. Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Sneed.
Here.
And Mr. Lawler.
That gives us six, first item meeting minutes from executive, executive meeting of August 8th. Need a motion to accept.
I make a motion to accept.
Second a motion.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, no status sheets. No committee reports. Uh, we'll go to old business, ready for action. PC 21 dash 22, Robert Diesel Camp.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is before you, PC 21 22. Robert Diesel Camp is the petitioner. Uh, it's a request for change in zoning from C2 to C8 on a 1.18 acre tract. Uh, the location is the northwest quadrant of Sheridan Road and Boundary Road. So you may recall that this petition site is in South County, uh, near Jefferson Barracks National Cemetery and Sylvan Springs Park. Here's an aerial of the site. You can see that it's also about a block away from Telegraph Road. So here's a, a view of the preliminary site development plan. I've outlined, uh, the major buildings so that you can see them better. The petitioner hasn't shown very many updates or changes or improvements to what had previously been at the site. Um, so it's going to preserve the covered parking structure. That's that largest rectangle. Um, the adjacent office building, the abutting storage structure and that metal outbuilding in the right upper corner. The site development plan shows the retention of the masonry wall and the chain link fence that surrounds the property. The most notable improvement is new landscaping indicated, indicated along Sheridan Road and Boundary Road. For this particular petition, the department is recommending denial. The proposal includes three distinct components. Uh, one is the contractor's office. One is a vehicle repair facility. And the last is a yard for the storage of contractors' equipment, materials and supplies. Uh, this preliminary site development plan does not show any of the equipment or storage associated with the use. But the, the department became more clear about that during public hearing. To start with the second use, a vehicle repair facility, um, the department has decided it is not appropriate because of its close proximity to, um, park and scenic zoning and residential areas. And for the third, uh, component, the yard for storage of contractors' equipment, materials and supplies is not permitted in any C commercial district, which is an important condition for the utilization of C8 planned commercial, uh, district procedure. Yards for storage of contractors' equipment, materials and supplies are found in M1 and M2, uh, zoned areas. The request, furthermore, the request does not facilitate the goals of the sixth district community area study, which calls for the extension of the Jefferson Barracks National Cemetery. That same study also, um, suggests that, um, the areas around Telegraph Road should be focused on local commercial uses, um, which the, these, this proposal doesn't seem to align with those goals either. And lastly, on an aesthetic level, the limited site improvements don't seem to, to improve those aesthetics, um, that are in that petition site. So now, uh, I'd like to request a motion, please.
I make a motion for denial.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Uh, Wayne, I've got a couple of questions.
All right, Keith.
The, uh, property that is north of this property here. The old, was that, was that the Framview Plaza?
Yes, that's correct. That's Framview Plaza immediately, uh, up to the north of it.
Is, what did they do with the fire truck?
So that, so that request was for specialty retail, um, and specialty sales of, of, uh, equipment. So that is, um, so that is what goes on for that site. I would have to pull up the C8 ordinance for that, either myself or Mel can pull that up, um, more quickly so that I can make sure that I understand, that I remember that petition exactly. But that is, that is one of the key differences is that in that request, it was for a, a request to sell, sell specialty retail, um, at that site.
And isn't there a rear entrance also into that site?
Uh, let me pull up, let me see if we, Mel, do we have a site development plan for that one or would that be on the recorder deeds?
For the Sentinel.
Yeah, for Sentinel.
I don't think there is a rear entrance there.
There's a curb cut on the aerial, but it's from before the, the new development.
They closed that then?
I can double track.
And, and any other question was, is when, uh, Southwestern Bell, that was their facility, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And they did these repairs? They did some repairs, not a lot of repairs there, but more, more of storage of trucks, wasn't it?
Yeah, so the previously, um, when it was used by a utility, there was, um, it is our understanding that there was some, um, light repair of, um, light duty vehicles at the site.
Nothing major.
Correct. There was nothing major. And that's one of the, that's I think, one of the scale differences between what was occurring at the site previously and what is that, is what is requested now. Um, is the scale of, um, the, and the intensity of the use and the intensity of, of the types of, uh, materials and equipment that would be housed at the site.
Okay, Southwestern Bell people basically came in the morning, picked up their work orders and trucks and left for the day.
Right. Just to, uh, make sure I understand, uh, the Sentinel, the new facility they built that you were talking about, Keith?
Yes.
And, and it is for sales and that, but it's also, uh, uh, used extensively for repairs and, and testing of those vehicles. So that you know. Is that right? Jacob?
Oh, I'm, I'm trying to find the, um, petition, I'm trying, cause I'm trying to find the petition here on the drive while I'm, while we're sitting here. Mel, do you remember the petition number for that?
2518.
2518. So in that one, the issues pertinent to this analysis include the appropriateness of the C8 plan commercial district, the suitability of an emergency equipment sales and repair facility with office and the site design.
Their preliminary plan does have a curb cut on Boundary Road. For Sentinel.
And then the permitted uses in that, uh, as recommended by the commission in 2018, um, shall authorize an emergency equipment sales and repair facility with office, a seasonal snow cone stand and all permitted C2 shopping district uses. So, um, so that is, that is what the, that was what was recommended back, uh, for the Sentinel site. But again, I would note there's a difference of intensity, um, in terms of, um, what is, um, you know, the, the general contractor's equipment and general contracting yard are, are a different sort of use and, and scope than, um, what is up north. Uh, the site immediately adjacent, uh, but it does include some, uh, some vehicle repair at that site.
And what's the issue with the petitioner's site across the street?
So currently across the street, um, those across the street, which is not at play in this petition, but just for, just for information for the commissions, um, for the commission's, um, knowledge, is that across the street, the petitioner does own several sites, um, that are zoned R, and Mel, correct me if it's R5 or R4, but it is residentially zoned.
They're actually R6.
R6, um, which, um, and what they're, they have, um, removed the, um, structures at the site and they are currently storing, um, vehicles, um, contracting equipment at the site. They've gravelled over the site, um, and they are going through, um, some, um, they are going through a, um, process with the county for, for violations.
They're also, uh, storing material.
That is correct. They are storing, uh, contracted materials at the site, from my last knowledge of it.
Yes, there's, there's a couple piles of, uh, items there. Okay. Anyone else have anything?
I have a question.
Yeah, buddy, Gary.
On the, uh, second to the last bullet point, the request does not facilitate the goals of the sixth district community area study, which calls for the extension of Jefferson Barracks National Cemetery. What does the extension of the cemetery have to do with this? Are they wanting that property?
I think that the extension is, the idea is that having a large scale contractor's yard and use immediately adjacent to an area where uh, the National Cemetery and, uh, a county park are, are located, um, is their uses that don't, um, cannot necessarily be appropriately cited next to and adjacent to one another. The uses of, uh, particularly the use of a yard for the storage of contractors' equipment, materials and supplies, um, are most notably founded in M1s and M2s. Um, and those are the types of, those are the types of land areas where you would expect to see that kind of, that kind of use and that kind of, um, intensity of uses. And, and really where you would want those, uh, to be located. Um, I think when staff is discussing this district community area study, um, it's to show and point out that this, um, this node in this corridor in this area were not envisioned and intended to be, um, expanded. That, that, really the insertion of new industrial uses at this area, in this area.
Okay, why did we have to put in there the extension though? I guess I keep hammering it. It's almost like if there wasn't an extension of the Jefferson Barracks, then it would be okay.
My understanding is that Sylvan Springs, the county's agreed to let the National Cemetery purchase that next door.
Yes, that has occurred.
Or extension. So we are talking about the National Cemetery being next door to this site.
Yeah, so when, you know, when we were noting that staff is, is just showing the commission that there, um, has been long and, long plans to, um, continue to develop and, uh, expand sort of, um, low intensity park and scenic and non-urban, um, and National Cemetery uses in this general vicinity. And that the, uh, expansion and insertion of industrial uses at this corner, um, you know, staff recommend that, uh, you know, we, we recommend against doing so.
Right. The, uh, this is Bill. The word extension, I think, is the issue, it, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. Another word, because I don't think they would ever extend the National Cemetery to that, to that location. But, but I think maybe there's a different word that could be used to, to indicate what you're saying, Jacob. I don't know that I got the best one, but it, it, it would certainly, uh, be consistent with, it would not be consistent with the, uh, use for the National Cemetery or something, but I think the extension, uh, says something different.
Sure. And if it, it may have just been, you know, staff not being, uh, clear enough on this slide, um, but we can ensure that, uh, the letter of recommendation, whichever, whatever the commission's decision is, you know, clearly reflects, um, we do not, and we, there is no world, I don't envision that they're going to extend the cemetery onto the other side of the road to this site. That's, and that's not the intent of staff. Staff is, uh, really what our intent was is, is to discuss, um, you know, the insertion of this use at this site, um, is, can, uh, it's difficult, would be extremely difficult to appropriately cite it here, uh, adjacent to, uh, a large county park and adjacent to a National Cemetery. Uh, and additionally, we, you know, our, one of our rationales is being is that, again, because these yards for storage of these very large equipments, um, is really, uh, noted in the, in the zoning ordinance to be found in the industrial districts.
Why would they purchase Sylvan Springs if they're not going to extend over there?
Oh, no, I do think that the National Cemetery is going to extend that direction. I think that the question, I think the question perhaps if I understood it correctly from Commissioner Sneed is this very site under petition, they're not going to expand to this very site. So.
No.
Correct. They're not, right.
Actually, Wayne, I believe this site is outside of Jefferson Barracks.
It could be, could be right, yeah.
Jefferson Barracks stops, I think, uh, at that point. Otherwise, they never would have had the auto parts store or the filling station on the corner.
Right.
They're all adjacent there. And Boundary Road is, I think, exactly the boundary of Jefferson Barracks.
Would proximity mean, in other words, you're looking for, Bill?
I'm sorry?
Proximity?
Yeah, I, I, I just understand the, the, the question of the use of the word extension.
And we can most assuredly ensure that, um, whatever document that you submit to the, to the county council is very clear on that. And we will, uh, ensure that the, that the next draft, or excuse me, or the next document that we provide to you is, is very clear in that regard.
Would that address your issue? On the word of extension?
Gary, I think you. Say that again, say that again.
Yeah, would that address your issue if the wording was changed?
Yeah, I, I think what we're trying to say is we think, don't think this is a good fit for being adjacent to the National Cemetery. Forget the parks, because we put stuff in next to parks all the time. But a cemetery has kind of a somber area. And I think that's what we're hitting at, that we don't want that next to the National Cemetery.
Does proximity work better for you?
Yeah. Yeah, because when I see the word extension, I automatically think, well, you're wanting to extend it, so you're gonna go against this property owner's wishes and thinking that the, uh, Jefferson Barracks Cemetery is gonna want that property.
Right.
And we gotta stop the guy from doing stuff, you know, so they can buy it. That, that's going through my mind.
Sure, and that is not the, because I cannot see there, you know, the, the cemetery is not gonna ever, I cannot see a world in which they would purchase this site because it's across the street. That's, and that was not the intent of staff. So, but I, the point is taken and I, and we will ensure that, um, that your letter of recommendation, ultimately whatever your determination is, is very clear in that regard.
Okay, anyone else have anything?
Just, just one thing, uh, Wayne.
Yeah.
If, if, uh, contractor was okay with just making it contractor's office, no vehicle repair, no storage other than pickup trucks that some of his foreman or superintendent might drop off there, would it still be, uh, not?
What I would say to that is essentially that is a permitted use in this, in, because offices are already a permitted use.
Okay.
That you wouldn't even have to go through a zoning petition. You can, you can develop the site, um, by right with an office. And, you know, so, and, and in the zone, and then the staff report, we did note, you know, the definition of an office is if, you know, if they can conduct sort of their, their contracting businesses administrative sort of, and, and sort of, um, you know, work inside of the building, you don't even need a zoning petition for that sort of work.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, he has an option here. Correct. Jason?
He definitely has the option, the, the property owner definitely has the option of using it as an office as defined in the zoning ordinance without even going, without even getting a, a request for a change in zoning. Um, I, staffed, you know, and when we noted, uh, or when we discussed the uses, that it's really three, there are three component uses to this request. You know, office is permitted by right. He could do so, um, by simply, you know, submitting a site development plan, um, to the, to the department. Um, it's the vehicle service that would be harder to cite, but the hardest and, and really not even appropriate for a C8 is that yard for the storage of contractors' equipment, materials and supplies. Cause that really kicks it into an industrial use.
And that's what he's doing across the street in violation. So there's a kind of a concern there.
My understanding was though that materials and weren't a big issue with him. Because I specifically asked him, did he use concrete forms? Was he gonna store them? Was he gonna store lumber? And he said, no. Uh, best of my recollection was he had a couple low boy trailers that he wanted to store there. And he didn't even have any big equipment. He said, most of that work he subcontracted out.
So at public hearing, what, what we have in the, in the staff report and Mel can jump in, there are a couple, um, Mel, why don't you, because I don't have the staff report open in front of me. Can you, can you read out what the, um, from what we have from public hearing, what he stated are, are would be stored at the site?
Sure. So we had written, "Equipment to be stored on the site includes tractors, mini excavators, dump trucks, pickup trucks, service vans, larger equipment trailers and smaller equipment trailers."
So when you start, when you start putting those equipment on a site, that is what kicks you to a yard for the storage of their equipment, supplies and materials.
That's basically what he's doing across the street. There's, uh, dump trucks over there and there's, uh, I think I remember seeing some large tractors. It's, it's not a very clean site. Okay, anyone else have anything to add? Okay, we have a motion.
I think I've heard about everything I wanted to hear.
Okay. That's what we're here for. So, uh, we have a motion for denial. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries 6-0. And we'll go on to, uh, correspondence is the next item. First one is PC 07 dash 06, Susan J. Evans and Todd in Lucas.
Good afternoon. Um, this is PC 07 dash 06, Susan J. Evans and Todd in Lucas. It's a request for an amendment to C8 ordinance 22,761 as amended, um, which covers 1.08 acres on the east side, on the east corner of Tesson Ferry Road and Gerald Drive. Um, this request is to permit personal services at the site, including hair styling, nails and makeup. Uh, the site is in South County and you can see it highlighted in red on the, um, aerial. The C8 governs two parcels, however, the petitioner is only proposing development on the hatchet parcel. And from this aerial, you can see some of the surrounding development on Tesson Ferry Road and the proximity to I-270. The petitioner included a preliminary site development plan showing the proposed building, parking and curb cut from Tesson Ferry Road. The excess parking is shown on pervious pavement. Um, the C8 ordinance only permits one entrance from Tesson Ferry Road. Um, thus the petitioner indicated plans to establish cross-access with the neighboring parcel and preliminary, um, review from MoDOT. Um, they indicated that they do not foresee any issues with the curb cut on Tesson Ferry in the proposed location. The petitioner also submitted some architectural elevations of the proposed structure, um, showing a, a high degree of fenestration, uh, on the front of the building. Um, and here's the northeast elevation. The department finds personal services to be an appropriate expansion of use at this location and recommends approval. We're also recommending the addition of retail use at the site. The C8 ordinance currently permits a second floor apartment for an owner, manager or employee. Um, and the department recommends removing the residential use as it is not appropriate without a specific development plan showing the use. Um, additionally, uh, the landscape requirements in the current ordinance are not in line with the current minimum landscaping regulations of the zoning ordinance. So we are recommending we bring those into conformity. Um, and finally, a, a formal request for over-parking at the site will be considered during the site plan review process. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Make a motion for approval based upon the recommendations of the staff.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and second discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We have an opposed? Okay, approved 6-0. And then we'll go on to, uh, PC 28 dash 21, JAMA West Properties.
So, PC 28 dash 21, JAMA West Properties LLC. This is also a, a request for an amendment to C8 ordinance 28,376 as amended. Um, this covers 6.18, 1.9 acres on the south side of Manchester Road, approximately 260 feet west of Dietrich Road. Um, and they are requesting amendments to the parking and drive aisle setbacks. Um, as you'll probably recall, this site is in Midwest County, um, and there you can see it outlined in red. From this aerial, you can see some of the, um, surrounding commercial development on Manchester and, and residential behind. This is the site development plan that is currently under review. It shows a two-foot drive aisle setback from the western property line and the ordinance currently calls for a 30-foot setback. The department is recommending approval. Um, a 30-foot setback does not match what was shown on the site development plan presented at public hearing. Um, and we, uh, it does not match the intent of the C8 ordinance. This amendment is correcting a department error. The department is also recommending, um, we add the phrase "as approved" on the site development plan to the eastern parking setback to allow flexibility during site development plan review. Um, and we also just note that concrete curbs will be required around all parking areas. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion for approval. I second.
Discussion?
Uh, I just have one question about, uh, a, a two-foot setback. Is, uh, can we put up that, uh, uh, plot plan that we had? Okay. Manchester Road is at the bottom of that. What, where is the two-foot setback begin? At Manchester Road or?
It's from the, the western property line. I apologize if I didn't say that. So this, um.
No, you may have. I might have missed that, but where, where is the two-foot setback?
So the red line is, uh, would be the, the setback and then, um, to the right, almost directly to the right, just because of the scale of the plan is, and black is the property line.
I got you. So it's not along Manchester Road?
No, it's, uh, between this and the, the adjoining commercial residence, or I'm sorry, commercial, um, development to the west.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You oppose, Steve?
No, I'm for it. Aye.
Right. Six, motion approved 6-0. PC 19 dash 22, Chromal Title Wave Car Wash, request for withdrawal.
Good afternoon, PC 19 dash 22, Chromal Inc. Um, it was a request for a CUP in the C2 shopping district located on the east side of Tesson Ferry Road. They are requesting a withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for withdrawal.
We have a second?
Second a motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it 6-0. And then the last correspondence is PC 31 dash 83, Ronnie's Enterprises.
This is a request for an amendment to C8 ordinance 11,072 as amended. Um, it's a 25.6 acre tract on the north side of Lindbergh Boulevard and west side of Baptist Church Road. Um, and the current request is to add a fast food restaurant with a drive through. This site is in South County. You can see the um overall uh tract outlined in red and the um petitioned area is the hatchards. Um, here you can see uh the commercial development at Lindbergh and Baptist Church Road and the surrounding residential development. This is the uh preliminary site development plan submitted by the petitioner. It's a five hundred and ten square foot fast food restaurant. It is drive through only. There is no pickup window for mobile orders. Um, it is drive through only. The petitioner indicated the um tenant would be Seven Brew um Beverage Restaurant. Um, and that the employees would be in the, in the drive through lanes taking orders similar to a Chick-fil-A. So the people, people would order from employees in the lanes, not through a kind of a loudspeaker. Um, and so they're showing two drive through lanes here. Um, and they've submitted architectural elevations of the site. And the department is recommending approval of this request. Um, we find that it's a reasonable expansion of the permitted uses and compatible with other uses along this portion of South Lindbergh. Um, we are recommending, uh, we also update the um landscape requirements to bring them into conformity with the current minimum landscaping regulations. Of the zoning ordinance. Um, and while it is not currently in the staff recommendation, we can add a requirement for architectural review. Um, if the commission wishes and we can add a, we would recommend for one hundred percent brickstone or other high quality materials to be used. So that is not currently in the staff recommendation, but can be added if it is the commission's will. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
I'd make a motion if you would recommend uh, put that recommendation in there.
I have a second. Uh, quick, quick item, architectural review. That's something the commission wants on, on everything, not just this particular uh item.
Okay.
Just as a point of reference. Um, discussion, anyone?
Yeah, I just wanna understand this well. Uh, as we're talking about the drive through lanes. Object for, for late does that. I just noticed out in West County. Uh, they're setting up little booths out there. In those drive lanes because of the extent heat. Where they've got the uh, people taking orders, but they're not walking up and down the lanes now. They've got portable booths that they're sitting up down there. I don't know if anybody's aware of that.
No.
Because, because uh, when it's, you know, a hundred degrees on a park, parking lot, kinda tough to put. People out there. As well as when there's. Uh. Minus ten degrees out there.
I mean, we've, and I've absolutely seen that same, you know, that same setup at, at the Chick-fil-A right here and I think it's in Brentwood. So you know, that would be a, a case where we would, could ask the petitioner to uh show um either decorative shade structures for their staff. Or show where they would have temporary, temporary, um, you know, that shade sort of structuring for their staff. Because that is, um, you know, well noted that, you know, if they're gonna have staff standing outside and they're probably aren't gonna be working on iPads, walk up to your car. Um, but you know, where, where those individuals are, um, making sure that the site plan um shows that and make sure that whatever it is that it's attractive.
We can do that.
Those uh, sites, air conditioning or heating?
You know, that, that I'm not, that, I've seen the ones at the Chick-fil-A.
I would guess that they are, otherwise they wouldn't have a booth out there. Those, you know, for Chick-fil-A.
Right, cause otherwise they'd bake you in those, in those little things.
That's, that's what I was thinking. They don't have to come back and uh get one re-approved. Uh, we approve it one way and then they do some additional stuff. Or they don't have to come back to the commissioner and talk about it.
So we'll make sure that um, i- if the commission does decide to approve this, that we can add in language that any accessory um shade structures um for staff to, to order is, is denoted on the site plan and shall be. Um, reviewed as part of, as part of the review for architectural elevations. Make sure that it's attractive.
That's just my opinion. The rest of the guys may feel differently.
I think you're right.
I can remember in a previous life, I would have liked some shade structure when I was uh flagging traffic or whatever.
I would have too.
Gary, that's a sad story.
Yes, it is. It made me retire.
Okay, anyone else?
I, I, I just have sort of a general question that. I certainly agree with the staff's recommendation for the higher quality materials. Uh, what, what I, what I am thinking though is we just approve uh, uh, a uh. Starbucks on Telegraph. And I remember talking about the quality of the. Materials and, and one thing the other, but we didn't really make that a part of that uh, uh, petition. For that, did we?
Mel, what's the, this is gonna be, do we know the petition number on that? We can, let me just see what the language said for um what the commission recommended. Let's see.
Should've been ten twenty one.
Ten dash twenty one, okay.
Yeah.
Let's see here, what does that say? Give me just a second commissioners. All right, that's Telegraph and Tansberger, okay. Letter of recommendation. Okay, the language for that was. The language for that was architectural elevation shall be standalone. The western facade shall include fifteen percent fenestration as approved on the architectural elevations and all other facades shall be treated equally and clad. In twenty percent brick or stone as approved on the site development plan. So that is what, that was the recommendation for that site.
Right, okay.
So whatever, if the commission would, you know, whatever the commission's decision on that, you know, we could um make sure that that's drafted appropriately.
Well. I think the way it's drafted right now for this one is, is fine.
And um, so what, what I can do is we can um incorporate those changes. And if it's the commission would like it, we can send it off, um incorporating those, or we can bring it back to you. Um, at the next meeting in two weeks so that you can take a look at those changes. Um, but it's up to the commission if, um, whichever direction you guys would like to do, staff will um facilitate that for you.
Your preference?
I, I think bringing it back and letting us see the results of that would be appropriate.
Sure.
Okay.
I agree with.
Anyone?
So I'd recommend um, a, a, a petition, or excuse me, a motion to hold the petition until your next meeting um to, to take a look at, at the revised staff recommendation.
Is that okay with the maker of the first and the second?
I'll second it. Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to hold?
I'll make a motion for a home.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six zero. And the last item is PC eleven eleven site plan. Dunkin Donuts.
PC uh eleven eleven Michael Geller Dunkin Donuts um is a CUP in the C two. It's a one point seven eight acre tract of land on the east side of Telegraph Road, approximately two hundred and fifty feet south of Golden Valley Drive. Um, the site is in South County. You can see it outlined in red. From this aerial, you can see some of the commercial development on Telegraph and the residential behind. Um, these are architectural elevations to bring the site into conformity with current corporate standards, so. Uh, and new signs will be added, however, they are not part of this review. So this is the south elevation. The west elevation, which would be visible from Telegraph Road. The north elevation. And the east elevation. And the department is recommending approval. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I can motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion, anyone?
What are the major changes to that? I mean.
It's just the colors.
Colors?
Essentially.
That's fine, thank you.
The current Dunkin Donuts is more uh, more tan and instead of the gray.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six zero. And uh.
I've got, I've got one more question about the Dunkin Donuts. Are they gonna go back to the old menu with a, a bigger variety of donuts?
I didn't know that.
Is there something you worry?
They didn't indicate that.
You don't eat them Keith.
Is there a particular kind you want?
Uh, there's, you should have many as you could, abundance. There was abundance.
Otis Snucks.
Here we go.
Hey Wayne, uh, I don't know if anybody noticed on the chat. Deal. Uh, a lady did say that they're gonna have a canopy that covers employees working the drive through on the Seven Brew. And they also have heaters under that canopy.
Oh, that's nice, okay.
I've asked her to, to put that in a letter to send, and send that to us so we can have that in the file as well.
Okay, anything for the good?
So just one thing, um, we have been working towards um getting ready to move the commission back to in-person meetings when you are ready. Um, Peter and I went down uh to the chamber and worked with the clerk and some of her staff on seeing um what technology's down there now. There's a bit more technology than when um we were last in the chamber. Um, so our goal, and I want to, to, to see your reaction to this, our, I think our goal is to have our first in-person meeting. Uh, during an executive meeting. That way it's, you know, lower attendance, sort of lower stakes and we can um run through any hiccups that, that occur. And we were thinking the second meeting in September, which would be Monday, September twenty sixth. So that would be, could be a four PM meeting. Um, we can schedule it, well, whenever's, you know, best for, for all of the commissioners to be there if possible. Um, and if that sounds good, we can also schedule a short meeting before that to kind of have a dry run to see all of the technology as well.
Within the, within moving to in-person, essentially, you know, permanently at that point and having your first in public, in-person public hearing, starting in the first meeting in October.
Uh, Wayne, this bill, I think you made a uh, uh, suggestion. Uh, back a couple of meetings ago, that it might be preferred to continue to have our executive meetings. Uh, through a team meeting. Uh, WebEx. And, and start out by just using or uh having in-person for the uh, uh, the public meetings. Am I remembering yours, your comment?
I remembered that as, I remember someone saying that, Mr. Sneed. Our thinking was just that for the sake of it being our first um in-person meeting again, have, not having it at a public hearing just in case.
Yeah, right. No, I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, but I remember what you're speaking of as well.
Okay, so.
I think what I was trying to get there was, you know, if, we got a short. Item or two that need to get rushed through, we can certainly do those kind of things on a Zoom meeting.
Right.
To expedite them and not make everyone come to uh Clayton.
Right.
Clayton doesn't like South County coming. That's why you, why it's hard to get there.
Especially four o'clock.
Yeah, four, four o'clock is the dozer, you know.
Coming from your region.
Yeah, you get killed out on the highway.
The commission really needs to have a discussion about meeting times and uh, not, not only times, but uh, the dates to try and get. Uh, accommodate the general public.
That was the other item. Um, I was going to say is that for that meeting, we'll have prepared a, a, a couple of options for the Q four meeting schedule, so we'll bring those as well.
Very good.
Sounds good.
So does that tentatively sound like a good goal to, to aim for an in-person executive meeting on September the twenty sixth?
This is Bill Ballard. I think uh, that'll give us an opportunity to clean things up and to be a little cleaner. And uh, if we make any errors, we can pick the ball up and still throw it.
Right.
Right, I agree.
And if the commission would prefer to meet at five or six PM instead of at four PM that day, you know, we can easily, I mean, it's an executive meeting for you to do your action. Um, you know, whatever time is, is best at four PM getting to, to Clayton is, you know, it's near the end of the workday and also rush hour. So if you want to give yourselves a little bit of extra time, um, you know, we facilitate the meeting at the time that you determine is appropriate, you know, within reason. It's eight o'clock, but you know what I mean.
What's your pleasure?
You said eight or nine, don't sound bad.
Well, I, at least my personal view uh is six o'clock worked pretty well for most of us, but I'd like to hear from the rest of commissioners.
I like that time also. It, it worked for twenty six years for me.
Had you're old.
Yeah, I know. Believe you're older though.
Anyone else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, why don't we shoot for six then?
All right. On the twenty six.
Traffic could be a hassle. As could parking. And we're still not allowed in the garage, right?
Uh, we can, we can check on that.
We can check on that. I don't, I don't remember. I don't, we can check on that.
Cause typically everyone parked in the lot across the street.
Which is convenient.
Right.
If you can get in there.
Sometime they have those trials over there.
Sometimes we get to park four blocks away.
Right.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, will you need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion for adjournment.
Second?
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Eyes have it six zero and uh, we need to get win.
Um, because of the Labor Day holiday, our September public hearing and first executive meeting right now are scheduled for the twelfth of September. So that's in three weeks.
Okay. See everyone there. Thank you very much.
Have a nice holiday weekend, everyone.
You too.